Virtual meeting via WebEx. And number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the Towns of Franklin website.
And by appointment in the municipal building.
Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members to allow witnesses to complete their presentation prior to questions. And in order to reduce background noise, to mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Instructions for public input for those that are calling in or watching via WebEx. There's there's two ways to participate. Or indicate your intention to participate. There is a range of any function. So you could indicate that or put your indicate in the chat section, not the Q and A, but the chat section, your desire to speak. Those calling calling in at the points in the hearing, I will open it up and allow you to provide comments and questions. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Anthony Caldwell. He's muted.
Oh, sorry, here.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's muted.
Okay, here. 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 Here.
Here.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here. Okay, on the agenda, we have the minutes of the regular meeting July 2nd, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Um, I see.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving to the hearing section, Somerset Group Hospitality ZBA 200011. Variance requested by the applicant due to interior renovations. Eliminating pool and conference rooms, adding a banquet center at 60 Cotton Tail Lane Somerset Block 530.04, Lot 1.01 in the C B zone. Lot be heard this evening. It will be carried to August 6th, 2020 with no further notification. Do we need to read anything else? Okay.
Christine needs to read something, hold up.
Okay, Christine.
Christine. Okay, so as you'll see on the screen, that is the nation for the August 6th meeting. The website link is Franklin TWPNJ.org/home/components/calendar/event/15597/2193. And on that you'll see the web, you'll see the link, the WebEx call for attendees. Or for those without internet access, you can call 1-408-418-9388. Access code 1294953096. Further, you could either email Christine at Christine@Woodbury. I'm sorry, let me reread that access code, 1294953060. Or you can call Christine at 732-873-2500, extension 625. Or email her at Christine@Woodbury@FranklinNJ.gov.
Okay, now, are we going with the regular agenda or are we going to move, switch the order of applications? Do we?
It really.
That one out yet?
It depends on the individuals who were who are eligible to vote on that first application, Mr. Chairman, and whether they can get that written email to Christine in time. So to clarify again, those individuals who were not present at the last meeting, but did read or listen to the audio for Elian acquisitions. The board needs a written certification that you did, in fact, read or listen to such recording. That could be done via email with an electronic signature. And before you vote, you need to send that certification to Christine.
Okay, then we'll proceed with Diamond Investors first. Everybody, do we have everything in order for that?
Yes.
Okay, Diamond. Elian ACQ LLC ZBA 190043 was carried from July 2nd. That application for warehouses Veronica Avenue will be heard later in the meeting. We will first start with Diamond Investors and Builders, ZBA 190030. See variants in which the applicant is looking to build a two-story, single-family dwelling. 61 Juliet Avenue Somerset Block 160, 1.01 in the R10 zone. Are we ready to proceed?
Let me do a double duty here, let me bring in Mr. Lanford. Hey, Mr. Lanford, when you're able, let us know you're there. I'll unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, and who should, is there anybody else I should be bringing in?
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, as my planner should be logging in.
Yep.
And and Mr. Saua, who is the applicant, may or may not be on.
They're both connected just now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If, I just want to confirm because again, this this matter dates back a few months and I I believe that the people that worked at the last meeting, according to my records, were Mr. Caldwell, Vice Chairman Grauman, Mr. McCracken, Mr. Rich, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Shepherd, who is not here this evening, and Chairman Thomas. Is that your understanding, Mr. Healy, and are all of the remaining six members online and ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay, and now this is Diamond Investors, right?
This is Diamond Investors.
Okay.
Okay, so assuming the remaining six members are available, we can proceed. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford is appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a continued matter from probably the last in-person hearing that we had in in the end of February of this year. This is an application to construct a single-family residential dwelling in the R7 zone. Obviously, single-family dwellings are permitted. On the night of the previous hearing, we presented testimony from Mr. Saua, who was the, one of the principals of Diamond Investors, to explain what he was doing, which was to construct a single-family house. There were two variances that were pre-existing conditions. One of them being lot area. The lot requirement in the zone is 9,000 square feet. The property in question is 5,500 square feet. Obviously, this application doesn't exacerbate or change that situation. The second variance is a frontage variance. This is a corner lot. We do have we we do have lot frontage on Ray Street of 100 feet where 90 feet is required.
Am I having a camera working? Is it possible for you to bring in the electric cord for this machine? I'm going to see if I get this one. In the back room.
Oh, that's mine, okay.
All right, continue. The this, the second variance that we were seeking was for lot frontage on Juliet Street. Again, it's a 90-foot requirement, but the existing lot frontage was, is on, is 55 feet, and that has not changed. We also had some other minor bulk variances. There was a concrete pad and some stairs at the rear of the property. That variance, as a result of the revised plans that have been submitted in conjunction with this application, has been eliminated so that the only variances that we have are the variances for the existing lot area and existing lot frontage on Juliet Avenue. The reason we did not complete the application in February, in addition to being rather late in the evening, was that the board suggested to my client that he consider reducing the size of the house. As Mr. Thomas indicated in his opening, we had a two-story, four-bedroom house. The board at that time felt that the house was a little large for the lot, even though it met the coverage requirements both for building coverage and impervious coverage. We did go back and we revised a plan and resubmitted a new building plan for the house. The house itself was reduced in size, four feet in width and about a foot and a half in depth, and it is now a three-bedroom dwelling. I believe Christine has the exhibits showing the new house. If she can put them up, and I'm sure you all have them in your package.
You have any traffic study, Peter?
That's not required for a single-family house.
Okay. And this is for a single-family house. Diamond Investors first. Which which one are you looking for?
Uh, just the new floor plans and elevations.
A bunch of them.
Okay. Actually, if we go, the first floor, again, the house has been made smaller. The first floor is essentially the same layout. As you look at the top of the exhibit that was put up, it shows that the house is 46 feet wide. The previous exhibit, when we submitted the original application, had the houses being 50 feet wide. So we did make it smaller. You'll also note that the house in depth is 20 feet, six inches. The original house was 22 feet. If you go to the next page, which is the second floor. Again, we have now eliminated, there were four bedrooms. We have eliminated one of the bedrooms, so there are only three bedrooms. If we go back now real quickly, just to the go back to the previous exhibit, I think I can deal with it on that exhibit. If the board recalls in the original application, there was a sliding glass door from the breakfast area out to the back with steps. And that's what created a variance. That sliding glass door is is being removed, and there are no steps, so there are no variances. So those are the changes that we made at the request of the board. The board indicated they wanted to see a slightly smaller house. We made it smaller. They wanted to see a three-bedroom house. We made it a three-bedroom house. The other change, if we go to the revised plot plan, I can indicate to you what that change is. Okay. The if the board recollects in February, there was a concern. We had a one-car garage with a driveway leading straight into the garage. The board and even some of the members of the public said the parking was an issue in that area. So we have now revised the driveway configuration to allow additional parking on site. There's a bump out which can get us an additional one, perhaps even two cars. With these changes, what we did was reduce the building coverage. We were at 20%, which was the maximum allowable by ordinance. We are down to 18.07%. The impervious coverage, we are down to 28.4%. We lost some of the impervious coverage because we made the house smaller, but we had to increase the impervious coverage because we had to add on to the garage. I'm sorry, onto the driveway at the request of the board. So we are at 28.4%. The ordinance requirement is 30%, so we are under the ordinance requirement. So those are the revisions that were made to the plan as per the board's request. We would agree to construct a house pursuant to those plans. If any of the board members have any questions regarding the revised plans, I would be happy to answer them. If not, I do have Mr. O'Brien to present the planning testimony for the variances for the existing conditions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. What is the square footage for the house now?
The square footage for the house is the footprint is 994 square feet. Anything else?
Yeah, yeah, the state reports asked that that they they produce to us compatibility as to the study of the other houses in that area. Is the client, are you prepared to do that tonight?
The, we have our planner to testify as to supporting the variances and to whether this house is consistent with what's in the
Okay.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then bring on the examiner.
Does he own this property?
Yes, if the board recalls, Diamond Investors is the owner of the property. And also, we did at the last meeting, put into evidence letters attempting to sell the property to the adjoining property owners. And we put into evidence those letters that neither property owner was interested in buying the property. Neither of the adjoining properties had any available property to sell to us.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
Anything else? Okay, planner.
Is Mr. O'Brien in the room or a room?
Good evening, Mr. Lanford and Mr. Chairman.
I see him.
Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Can we have Mr. O'Brien sworn, please?
Yes. Did he, did he provide testimony at the last meeting?
Uh, no, we had two Diamond Investor, that that's where I was confused. We had two Diamond Investor applications that night. He did testify on the one, he never testified on the other one.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last and provide us with your professional address, please.
My name is Kevin O'Brien, O apostrophe capital B R I E N. I am with Shamrock Enterprises located at Madison House, Suite B, Madison Avenue in Rowan, New Jersey.
Mr. O'Brien, in February of this year, you testified in another application involving Diamond Investors, and you were qualified that evening, were you not, as a professional planner?
Although that was a few centuries ago, yes, sir, I was indeed.
Well, last night was, you were qualified also, so I think that will help tonight, too.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Brien, you are familiar with the subject property, the application that is before this board, the zoning ordinance, master plan of the Towns of Franklin and the Municipal Land Use Law, are you not?
Yes, sir, I am.
And also, you are familiar with the surrounding environs in which this property is located, are you not?
I am.
Okay, and as I indicated in my opening statement, with the elimination of the one variance for the stairs in the rear of the house, the only two remaining variances are both variances for existing condition. The one being the lot frontage on Juliet and the other one being the lot area.
That is correct, Mr. Lanford.
Okay, and can you indicate that based on those variances that you're seeking, what analysis you conducted and what you found?
Yes, sir. This area, as the board knows, is a neighborhood of undersized lots. The 26 properties on Block 160 and on the east side of Juliet, there are 14 properties or 50, 53% that are 50 feet plus or minus, which is less than what's required. Corner lots require 9,000 square feet, and interior lots require 7,500 square feet of lot area. None of the corner lots on Block 160 have 9,000 square feet. As you've heard from Mr. Lanford, the applicant has sent buy and sell letters with no response. The current, the property is currently vacant, which is out of character with the neighborhood. Now, the rest of the neighborhood is developed, and having a gap in the pattern is uncharacteristic, and a vacant lot can be an eyesore and an area for mischief. The applicant has revised the plans since our initial meeting back in February and has made substantial changes, as you've heard a summary from Mr. Lanford, including making the house four feet smaller in length, a foot and a half smaller in width, based on board comments that the house was too big for the lot. The applicant now proposes three bedrooms rather than the original four. The steps on the Juliet Avenue side of the house were eliminated to lessen the activity next to the neighbor. And now three cars, excuse me, parking for three cars is now provided on-site. The garage and two driveway spaces, rather than the one garage and one driveway space that was in the original application. I believe that the master plan has some passages that are cogent to this discussion this evening. And one is the goal of maintaining the diversity of housing, but encouraging infill and stabilization of current residential areas, rather than continuing sprawl patterns of development. It talks about encouraging new construction and renovation in in developed areas. And I believe this application meets this goal by providing infill housing that is conforming to the neighborhood in a developed area.
Does the municipal land use law give the board any guidance in making their determination as to whether to grant the variances?
Yes, it does. In the MLUL, Section 40:55D-2, where the purposes of zoning are listed, I believe this conforms to several of them, including A for Alpha, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Putting in a new house, which is going to be completely up to modern code, unlike the somewhat older homes in this neighborhood, is putting a safe home here, and that certainly promotes the general welfare. Item G for Golf provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of residential uses in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. This does provide much-needed housing in an area that is developed and is certainly the right place to put it, rather than out in a sprawl area. I developed a desirable visual environment. The plans that have been submitted with the new house show, I believe, an attractive house that's going to fit in with the character of the neighborhood. M, encourage coordination of the various public and private procedures to the more efficient use of the land. Replacing a vacant piece of property with one that has a dwelling on it that conforms to the neighborhood, contributes to tax radibles, is certainly consistent with the municipal land use law.
And in response to the question of one of the board members, is the size of the house compatible with and consistent with the development patterns in that neighborhood?
It is. It is set back like the other homes on Juliet. It's also set back considerably from Ray Street. In fact, it's set back further than the adjoining house. So the fact that it's on a corner lot, people like to see a little distance from a house rather than a house be right up on an intersection. So this is about as far away as it can get from that intersection. So it certainly is not looming over a passerby on those streets.
And do you have a conclusion or opinion as to whether the board can grant the variance under the C1 standards? And also, can you opine as based on the law, what happens if the board were to deny the variance and not allow the construction of a dwelling on this property?
Well, you would be zoning zoning the property into inutility, which is certainly not something that is appropriate under the land use law. But to talk about the C1, which is a hardship based upon the size and shape of the land, this is an undersized lot in a neighborhood of undersized lots. The applicant has proposed a home here that is in keeping with the neighborhood, that meets the bulk requirements of the area. No other variances are required. And in addition to the C1, I believe that it also qualifies under C2 and that the benefits outweigh the detriments in that this proposal is a better planning alternative than a more conforming design, which is not possible given the undersized lot. This application also supports the MLUL and the master plan. As I say, I believe it conforms to the pattern of development. It will not have any negative impact upon the neighborhood and surrounding properties. And I would conclude by saying that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I welcome any further questions, Mr. Lanford.
I have no further questions of you, Mr. O'Brien. I'll turn you over to the board.
Any questions from the board?
Chairman, I don't have any questions. I just want to take the opportunity to remind Mr. McCracken of what to stand to, to vote on the next application. I need to send that email to Christine.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. We would like that.
Okay, then.
Mr. Chairman, I just want clarification. Mr. O'Brien, you mentioned the master plan goal. What what specific goal was that and what master plan was in the revision, the 2016 revision or?
Yes, Mr. Healy, that was the 2016 reexamination, and the goal was maintain the diversity of housing, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for the witness?
Let me step in again, just procedurally again to the public. If you have, if you have any comments or questions, if you're participating via WebEx, you can either raise your hand or indicate in the chat your desire to speak. Ask questions or make a comment. And those calling in, I will mute you at the time that it's open to the public.
Okay, this would be the time for people to do that. We will open to the public.
First going to unmute the callers and give anybody else via WebEx the opportunity to raise their hand or indicate in chat. So unmute callers. Callers, does anybody have any comments or questions on this application? Anybody have, this is on Diamond. Juliet. Not hearing any, Mr. Chairman. Callers, one last time. I'm going to mute the callers. And I do not see any indication of any of the people participating via WebEx. I don't see any hands raised, and I don't see anything. Any indication of their desire to speak on this application.
Okay, that means I will close to the public. Anything you want to add, Mr. Lanford?
Just very briefly, I think you can see by the plans that were submitted to the board that the applicant has addressed the concerns that the board had back in February. As we indicated back in February, the only variances that we are seeking are variances for existing conditions. This application now does not have any other variances. There were some minor bulk variances that have been eliminated. I think we've exceeded to the wishes of the board. I think we've exceeded to the wishes of the board, and I think Mr. O'Brien's testimony clearly supports the grant of the variance to construct the house on this lot.
Okay, board, any questions, any comments or any motions?
I, if there's no other comments, I move to, to grant the variance for Diamond Investors and Builders LLC, ZBA 19-ish, 00030, for 61 Juliet Avenue in Somerset.
Second.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, poll the board, please.
I'm sorry. Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay.
Christine, I see.
We are at ADQ LLC, ZBA 190043. D1 use variance, C variances, minor subdivision site plan, which the applicant subdivided the property into two lots, and will be constructing two warehouses, building one 425,250 square feet and building two 118,800 square feet at 47 Veronica Avenue and 74 102 Bennett Lane Somerset, Block 88.02, Block 14267172, with portions of the property in the M1 R40A and OP zones. Before we go on, we basically have finished this hearing and have the voting left to do, but we have a couple procedural issues maybe to talk about. First of all, did we get and do we have seven members who can vote?
This is Bruce, and I sent it.
I don't, I don't.
Well, you said you were going to look. I sent it to you. On your email, I sent it to you. How could I have sent it?
Christine?
I'm sorry, who's talking?
Anthony. Did you get mine?
Hi, Anthony.
Hi, did you get mine? I sent you.
Let me try to refresh. Actually, Mark is actually going to walk over. Okay, Bruce.
Uh chores I wanted to take care of uh is maybe uh give a little clarification to board members, especially new ones. Uh as I saw some of the emails about the idea of a resolution here to vote on tonight, should this application be passed? This is actually not something unusual. We have done that, done this as a board numerous times in the past. However, that being said, we have not done it uh recently. I guess probably because we don't have the volume of applications that we used to have. It can be asked for by the applicant for a lot of different reasons. Uh maybe they're approaching a timeline for or financing or closing this uh on the purchase of the land or or whatever it may be. It's not to be taken by board members as the applicant pressuring anybody to give a positive vote. This is completely separate from the vote. It only take, it only happens if the application is approved. If it's not approved, obviously, we wouldn't vote or look at a resolution. Uh yeah, it's common, it's, it has been in the past, something common. I think we did it last. Can't remember the candy company out in uh off Cotton Tail Lane that was imminently moving to Canada if they didn't meet their deadline to get an approval on a big expansion for their building. Because of the interaction with the parent company and financing involved and things like that, it so happened, we didn't approve that. And then we also did approve the resolution at the end, but separated from the application. It hasn't anything to do with whether your vote is yes or no.
Uh Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Lanford um speaking. I, I don't think there's really a need for that. Um I mean, the hearing was closed. Um you know, all of the testimony was provided. Um you know, really, as you said a few minutes ago, the only thing for the deal at this point, once we, um whether we have a, you know, seven members, it is one way or the other.
I think at that, at that discussion point, I can remind the board of some of the potential conditions um that were discussed.
If that's, if that's, uh you know, in order to form a motion, that might maybe refresh the board's uh memory of, you know, the meeting a few weeks ago. Um but I, yeah, I don't think, you know, he.
He concluded his hearing, his testimony.
I just. I think it's always. I think if you, if you can do that, that's good. I think it's always beneficial to, to refresh memories, especially in this meeting. It's not quite as open a discussion as normally would be.
So are we just now waiting to receive the emails?
Yes, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Something I can help you with? I've done yourself so I can.
Yeah.
There's just unmuted views. Is there something Christine can help you with?
Yeah. Yeah, what I'm, what I'm doing now is I've got the, I've got it up. Uh and I'm at, I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Okay, did you, did you put the email that you sent me?
Y- yes.
Okay, could you just come to that email to where you're sitting? Crackin?
Yeah.
S and a slash in front of Bruce McCracken.
Let's check it out.
Yeah. Send the word document in front of the.
In the email you just, fine, just pull up the email you go in.
Yeah.
Pull up the email you sent me.
Yeah.
And then hit forward in your tool bar, hit the word.
Yep.
Okay, so now that you can forward, put my name up in the top where the person.
I think I got that.
Okay, so now in the bottom where you wrote.
Wait, hold on, hold on, listen, my coaching. Yeah, I know what to do, I'll do it in two minutes. Yeah.
I'll tell you soon as I get it.
Yeah, all right, thanks. Come on, what are we doing here?
Chris, Dan, I think I have to give him some more help.
A Tom verse?
He's still on mute.
I gotta go on, I keep on reading.
Okay, what, what's the matter?
Cancel. All right. Yeah, yeah. Like, okay. Up here. Okay. Go ahead. Okay. I got them. I know what it is, that it is.
Kind of garbled, what are you saying?
Okay, go ahead, I'm just getting my coaching, hold on.
Just, just send the email, Bruce.
Up here.
Tell me what you see on the screen, Bruce.
Here it is, okay, here it is. Yeah. Okay, I'm going in. The capital, capital, S slash.
And so it comes back to me.
Yeah. I, I guess so, let's see. All right. Jeez, what happened to this thing? Everything's gone now. Just stay on with her, stay on. She'll, she'll call.
My number? I'll see you in my, wait a minute, hold on.
This one is gonna be, oh. Cancel, I'll save. Okay, here's the one we did. Yeah, go ahead.
Call me?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll call you in a minute.
Call me now so I can help you through it.
What you doing?
I can do that. No, 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 stay on, you gotta stay on. She doesn't know, she can't see what, what you can see.
Are you talking to your son, he's helping you? Okay.
Yeah. Okay, there it is. Now I need an S. Okay, what I'm doing is I'm putting capital S slash on my name. I'm, I'm doing cap. Yeah. I've got the word document, open the left forward. I'm editing. I'll, I'll edit it, save it, send it over. Yeah. Now I need to Google check it. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, put me on mute, guys, so I can talk to my son.
You're trying to control things, but.
Okay.
Okay, Bruce, save yourself.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on.
Didn't make it? I, I, I really can't see, is the S, is the electronic signature there? Does it, does it say signature?
Is Bruce McCracken dates and then signature of.
We just sent the one with the.
And it was just sent, it was just sent to be from his email on eight forty uh PM on July sixteenth, twenty nine. Okay, I think that that's acceptable considering that we have Mr. McCracken here who just forwarded the email that he had just forwarded that certification. The certification was well-written, Mr. McCracken, thank you for that. Um I think um with that, Mr. McCracken did certify that he did listen to the um audio and is um, you know, up to date on the happenings of this application and is prepared to vote on said application.
Okay, does that leave us prepared then to continue? Okay, that being said then, we'll entertain a motion from the board.
Excuse me, wasn't um Mark going to indicate some of the conditions that we discussed? We did a.
Okay, so I can. It was in the resolution they sent today.
I can go through some.
Some um potential uh conditions for the board um that was discussed last time, so.
Um the applicant shall provide NJDOT's.
Comments regarding their review of the traffic flow generated by the proposed development. Applicants shall submit the new interpretation currently under review by the NJDEP. The um larger of the two lots, that is the forty-eight acre lot was identified by engineer during the hearing.
Lot seventy-one point oh one was identified.
Identified as lot seventy-two point oh one on the subdivision plan.
By the lot thirteen point oh one on the site plan regardless.
The proposed numbers in association with the minor subdivision.
Ultimately be as directed by township.
Township staff and the subdivision plan and associated deeds shall be revised per the direction of township staff for their review and approval prior to filing. Applicants shall comply with the technical group review comments of the Delaware Rarine Canal Commission. Applicants shall obtain an official stress from the Franklin Township nine-one-one coordinator. Applicants shall provide appropriate bonds and engineering fees and attend a pre-construction meeting prior to site work.
Our fees shall be paid.
Paid and submitted under separate cover by the applicant at the time of adoption of the resolution of site plan approval for the cost of making.
Upgrades and modifications to tax maps and the general graphic information system.
Applicants shall provide uh.
Time to final plans are submitted for signature.
Signature of municipal officials.
Applicants shall submit cat-generated data files prepared by.
Prepared by New Jersey License Surveyor directly.
Able into an.
Technical image of the plan per the requirements of ordinance section one twelve three twenty-nine. Applicants shall comply with the.
Applicants for both.
For both warehouse buildings.
Other detention basins are to be contained.
And easement.
The ease.
Approved by the township engineer prior to filing.
With the Somerset County clerk's office.
The applicant is responsible for their maintenance of the buffer area surrounding the basin. Basins in perpetuity and an easement allowing for the applicant's maintenance.
Of the buffer shall be provided for the review and approval of the easement prior uh of.
Prior to filing uh uh and any ambiguities regarding you to all this.
Those were the conditions that the board.
The board um was contemplating um at the end of the hearing.
Okay, I'll let you have a motion and then we can. Okay, I'd like to have a motion and then we can have any other word discussion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, uh, um, this application, uh, with all the conditions that Mark just read. Plus, I would like to add a condition where, uh, we, we've been, as a, as a, as a board, we've, we've pretty much put fences around the basins, okay, detention basins. I would like to make that a part of the motion and a fence, I would like to put a six-foot-tall fence, uh, from, from Veronica down the entrance and along the entrance where the buildings are, especially the doctor's offices. And that's up for discussion if anybody wants to add anything or take it away.
Actually, um, I, I agree with protecting the, um, doctor's offices. That was something that was really bothering me a lot. Um, there's nothing we can do about the traffic that they were complaining about, but certainly, um, a fence that might protect them from noise. Um, I'm not sure about the detention basins, I think that was discussed, um, and, and the issue was raised with the engineer. Um, and I think they, they said that it, it didn't make sense, I don't remember why, but the engineer, I think, said that that didn't make sense.
I believe that the testimony was that the slopes were not to a degree that required the fencing and the fencing could actually, um, cause, um, an impediment to a rescue, that's, I think that was a testimony by Mr. Fruit.
Okay, I will retract the fencing then. Hey, did we get a second? I stand in motion. Uh, anyone have any other comments?
Yes, this Gary, Gary Rosenthal, my only point is, um, when, uh, Mr. Chadford gave his summary, he made an extremely good point that when these, uh, physicians moved in there, they knew that it was a type of, it was a type of facility that would cause all this and, uh, and all of it is, is according to the, uh, approvals for this type of, um, property, so I'm not concerned about the doctors at all because it was their decision to move into that area.
Okay, I, I do have a comment also, because of the objectors last week, I s- took a trip this morning, I spent about an hour and a half actually physically inspecting the properties and walking through there. The three medical office buildings, uh, believe it or not, are really gener- traffic generators, there are probably a total of four to five hundred cars in the three parking lots. To the extent that one, one of them, you had to drop your patient off at the drop-off and then sit in the car and wait for someone to leave in order for you to get a parking lot, a spot. Second, around in the back of those buildings, they must be two hundred plus feet from any possible, uh, near anywhere, two hundred feet or so from the warehouses. It's hard to see because it's actually heavily buffered back there. There's a detention basin that runs behind all three parking lots, that's landscaped and buffered also. Uh, watching what was going on in the parking lots and the fact that you can hardly see the applicant's site from the, uh, from the back of those parking lots would be very difficult for me to imagine that the traffic on the site of this application would have any interference with anything going on in the medical buildings. The traffic on the street could be, you know, another issue, but we're looking, uh, if, if the board felt that appropriate, as a planning board member, I'd be happy to bring it up to the planning board to take a look at, uh, uh, properties, uh, areas that are zoned for warehousing and offices and, and maybe take a look and see that they're all appropriate. Uh, you know, warehouses are appropriate next to these places, there might be some places where it isn't. The traffic? Traffic is, you know, we, we can't do it, we've done everything we can do about the traffic, but the traffic, the real traffic generator there is probably not gonna be the trucks. It's actually the medical offices themselves with the, the people that go in and out of there constantly all day long. I don't, the other thing in terms of the variance, uh, the devariance is, is because the detention basin is on a residential property, which we found out is undevelopable and actually the detention basin would have, would have no effect on any, anyone, and it does in fact, uh, the applicant did say they could put the detention basins underground and on the property, but it creates a type of buffer from the other side of the backside of the property. So they're actually, by granting the variance, I think we're giving them a better site plan. So I will pro- I will support this. Are, are there any other comments?
Well, based on what you said, um, and I withdraw the issue of the fence entirely. Um, I would support the application.
Any other comments?
Let me, let me just make sure procedures, Mr. Rich made the motion, right? And, and his motion indicated a six-foot-high fence along, um, along the entrance drive and the rear of the buildings along Veronica, uh, adjacent to the warehouses. Um, and then, but then he, he took back the, uh, uh, the fencing around the detention basin. That's the, that's the current status of the motion. Yes. Is that correct, Mr. Rich? Okay.
If there's, if there's no other discussion, then, uh, follow the board.
Wait a minute, what's the staff, what's the motion now? The motion is with the fence in the back of the, uh, of office buildings or no fence at all?
No fence. No fence.
Fence at all?
Is there a fence around, was the fence, a separate fence around the basin, is that, are we talking about two separate?
But, but Mr., I think, I think, why don't we have Mr. Rich speak since he's the one who made the motion originally?
Okay, do you wanna hear my motion again on the fence and the basins or? Where are we at?
What, what you're kicking forward now?
So, from what I understand, the detention basin fences are out and the fence along the entrance and behind the buildings is also out. Is that what you agree on?
Go ahead.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Second.
That's the motion, and it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, I guess you can follow the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Crackin?
Yes.
Colin Rich?
Yes.
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 All right, I'm not sure because I didn't think Anthony was. On this.
Yes. Now bef- before we adjourn. Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's right, before we adjourn then, we have the other item of, uh, a motion to pass the resolution, uh, which would be at this point, the same one you just passed now.
Do you want me to call them?
Need a motion to do that?
I just wanted to.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
I just wanted to.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, mother, there usually isn't, all the board.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now we'll have a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Second.
Hold, hold favor.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned, stay safe, thank you all for your patience tonight, these are trying time meetings in trying times, but hopefully we'll get to the end of the tunnel. Everybody have a good weekend.
Thank you, good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.